All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's call our meeting to order this Tuesday, July 30th at 9:30 this morning. Let's begin with our roll call.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
All right, if I can invite you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda this morning?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, that passes unanimously. I don't believe we have any awards or presentations this morning, so it is now time for public comment. If you are here and would like to offer a comment of any nature, come on down. You'll have three minutes. If it's about land use, we have time set aside for those two cases. So if you're here for an item of general public comment, this is your moment. Come on down, introduce yourself, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Ken Ramirez, 13080 Piccadilly Road. Couple of weeks ago, I came in about the assassination attempt on Donald Trump. And after I sat down, there were some comments about guns. And there was a time I was definitely thinking that guns should have been regulated more often until we had riots and stuff where people were not being defended by the police, especially out in Portland and Seattle. That changed my mind drastically. And during my first comments, I was talking about how the assassination camp is about people who just have a lot of hatred in their hearts and that as a society, we need to change our viewpoints on that. And it's not the guns that are causing the problems because out in England, they have just about as many murders per capita with knives. It's what's going on with the anger of people. Now, I normally just come in here to talk about my tax money being spent on the LBGQ community and how they are insulting theists of many different religions and that our council is promoting that. It is a shame to see what they did at the Olympics, you know. It is wrong. It's hateful to see them do the things that they do and grooming children, you know, especially the children. It is such a sin to, what would you call it, groom children to be sexual objects? And that's what the LBGQ community does do, maybe not all of them, but a higher percent than the general population. I appreciate your time. I thank you for this three minutes of my time. I really do. Because if we don't talk to each other, the world's just going to go further down a hole. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ramirez, welcome, Commissioner Henry. Thanks for joining us. Is there anyone else from the public who has comments? Okay, seeing no one else come down, that concludes public comment and it comes over to elected official communication. Anyone want to speak about anything going on in Adams County this week? Oh, yeah. Let's start with Commissioner Henry and we'll go down the dais.
Okay, let me catch my breath. All I want to do is basically, even though I wasn't here for the full comment in the public, is I'll take two parents that value their children over someone that pays off a stripper and grabs women's pussies and cheats on every single one of their wives. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On a different note, I want to say that fair is here. We get a start tomorrow night, Employee Appreciation Night, and of course, every night is my favorite night. And, you know, I hope that everyone comes out, everyone enjoys. Let's make this another record-setting year. We have a record-setting year almost every year with the fair. And I just want to see everybody out there enjoying all that Adams County can offer. Don't forget your 4H and don't forget your Latino days on Sunday. The bands are going to be excellent. The entertainment's going to be excellent. And this is all because of our taxpayers and what we want to pay back to them. And I hope to see each and every one of you out there, at least one of those nights. Thank you. Looking forward to the fair this week. There's plenty of opportunities for everyone to get involved or to come just check out all the booths, check out livestock. And then the coolest thing about the fair is just interacting with folks throughout the community that you may not get a chance to interact with. So I recommend everyone, please, take a few minutes, come on out. A lot of this stuff is free. Some of the food is a little bit more pricey, but it's still pretty good. And I would hope that you come out and check it all out. There's a lot to do, a lot to see. And I think these are the kind of opportunities that we need to be building up a lot more community engagement. So thank you all very much. Look forward to seeing you this week.
Thank you, Chair. So just want to reiterate some points that I made earlier on this year is that I think it's important that we all step away from our computers and the TV once in a while. We get out in nature. It's National Parks Month. We can't have these conversations if you're sitting behind your TV and you're sitting in front of your computer screen. So our Parks and Rec Department's been a big month for them. We broke ground on a brand-new parks maintenance facility. It's called our South Park Facility. We just got over the July 3rd event. It was amazing. The fair's coming up. We also have Festival Latino in September. Preparations are underway. It's our second annual Festival Latino. Last year, we planned for 3,000 to 5,000 attendees. We received 12,000. It was a sustained attendance of 12,000 throughout the day. And so it was a big hit, a big need in community. The artwork was amazing. It's so heartwarming to see the families out there looking at our, you know. There was one image in mind. It was a little girl that we had a lot of dolls and we call them dolls there. But to see a girl go up and hug the artwork is really heartwarming, to see yourself in that. And I think that's what Adams County is all about, is to meet our residents where they are so that they see themselves in community. They see themselves in artwork and certainly that they see their needs in themselves in our policy that we create every day. Proud of our board. So great to see everyone here. Welcome back.
Yes, echo the excitement for the upcoming fair that really is welcome to the whole community and is a great lineup in so many events we do here in Adams County, kicking off with our first big summer event being Adams County Pride, where we celebrate our gay and queer community with a lot of joy and welcome them in and then have a festival for everyone at the fair. And then conclude our big summer festivals with Festival Latino. So if whatever you have the capacity to join, please know that we love you, we celebrate you, and we want you to come join us with your friends and family, come out for a concert, demolition derby, or just a corn dog, whatever works for you. So thanks for my colleagues and all the highlighting. And we have to take a moment to honor Commissioner Odoricio, who just came back from three weeks at Harvard, where he apparently learned things in the state and local government program at the Kennedy School. And we're delighted to have you back and have a full quorum again. So with that, we do have a full agenda this morning. Does anyone have a motion on the consent calendar? Chair make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion and then.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, that passes unanimously. New business county manager, anything this morning? No items. County attorney, I believe you have a few things for executive session.
I do. Commissioners, if we have time today, I would ask that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute 246402-4B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a payroll issue.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Move to approve?
Second. Moved and seconded, that passes unanimously. Anything else? All right, thank you. That brings us to our land use cases. The first one is RCU 2022-18. Is staff ready? I believe it's just a continuance. Or would you like a break? I saw you run, Jen.
I think we're ready to go. I'll do the continuance and then Greg can get ready for his case.
Look at you guys multitasking. It's like you've been watching the Olympics and you're inspired.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. The case is a Better Place Conditional Use Permit, RCU 2022-18, located at 7261 Washington Street. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow a funeral home with a crematorium in a commercial three-zone district. So this case was heard at the Planning Commission on June 27th, 2024. There was discussion about the desire for additional public notice and because we had several continuances, as you're aware. So this case was continued to the July 25th Planning Commission last Thursday. In order to allow for adequate time for staff to repair packet for the Board of County Commissioners, we need to continue today's hearing date. And we're recommending that it be continued to August 13th. That's probably about the quickest turnaround time that staff can do in order to get on your agenda. We do want to make sure that it's heard in a timely manner in order for the applicant and the public to have, you know, an expeditious process. So therefore, staffs are recommending continuance of the subject request to August 13th at 9:30 a.m.
Okay, thank you for that. Colleagues, any questions for staff?
After you just make sure if there's anyone here to testify, then I will make the motion to continue.
Sounds good. Is there anyone here to testify, the applicant or anyone from the general public who would like to make a comment on this, assuming it was going to be heard today? You're also invited back on August 13th. Seeing no comments on RCU 2022-18, let's take a motion.
Madam Chair, move to continue to RCU 22-18 to August 13th, 2024, EOC meeting at 9:30 a.m.
Second. All right, moved and seconded, that passes unanimously. That's continued to next month. And then I believe y'all look ready or said you were ready for PLN 2023-9 Wolf Creek Run West Metro District. Is that correct? We can also take a break. No, ready to go.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Greg Barnes with the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department. And as mentioned, this application is the Wolf Creek Run West Metropolitan District. The application was filed by Mr. Carlton Babs. The application is to establish a special district in the area pursuant to state statutes. The special district would provide services and infrastructure for a portion of the upcoming Wolf Creek Run West subdivision. This image shows where the site is located. So the Wolf Creek Run West subdivision is essentially at the intersection of 26th Avenue and Piggott Road. Just to the south and east of this site, you'll see the unincorporated community of Strasburg. The metro district boundary that's being proposed is for undeveloped portions of this Wolf Creek Run West subdivision, which currently there are three filings in processing with our department. A closer view just to show you, so this entire site boundary is undeveloped and is currently in the works to come before you for subdivision plots. Around five years ago, the final development plan for the Wolf Creek Run West Planned Unit Development was approved. And this is located within that Planned Unit Development. The county's comprehensive plan has designated a future land use of residential low in the area. And that's consistent with single-family dwellings at urban densities, which is what is being proposed by these subdivisions as well as what was approved with the Planned Unit Development. It's also important to note that it's consistent with the Strasburg area plan, which was adopted around 2002. So this is an image of the Planned Unit Development for Wolf Creek Run West as a whole. The red outline shows the boundary of the full inclusion area of the site. So the application. So the application before you is approximately about 29 acres, consistent with one of the filings, which is the most advanced. And then there's an ultimate inclusion area, which would include the entire red boundary. And that's roughly about 168 acres. At ultimate buildout, you'll see approximately 327 dwellings in this site if approved. The value of the land that built out would be around 13.1 million. The proposed service plan for the metro district would allow for a maximum debt of 25 million and a maximum mill levy being assessed at 50 mils. The interest rate would be determined by the market, but there would be a maximum interest rate of 12%. And the services that would be proposed as part of the service plan includes fire suppression, mosquito control, parks and their maintenance for the Planned Unit Development open space, traffic safety, sanitation, stormwater, solid waste disposal, improvements to streets with county approval, television relay and translation, water infrastructure, security, and covenant enforcement. When reviewing the establishment of a special district application, there are four required findings of fact. That includes whether or not there's existing or projected need for the services being provided, if the services currently aren't inadequate for the projected needs of the future development, that the district that's being proposed is capable of providing the services that are being anticipated. And then finally, that the debt that is incurred can be discharged within a timely manner. There's also five discretionary findings of fact, and that includes that the services could not be provided within a reasonable time to not stifle future development. That the service standards are consistent with service standards in the region to make sure that this district is going to have the same quality of services as other areas, that it's compliant with master planning and master water quality planning. And then finally, that it's in the best interest of those being served within the district. Upon staff's review of this application, we did determine that there was no duplication of services. We did provide this notice to all surrounding municipalities and districts. We also hired an independent financial review, which was paid for by the applicant. And they did provide a letter stating that the debt could be discharged within a reasonable manner. Overall, development patterns in the area have increased the need for services and infrastructure in this area. And the development is consistent with approved plans for the PUD, as well as the Strasburg Plan in the area. As mentioned, we notified everybody within the district, and we also notified 750 feet beyond that district boundary. We sent 123 notices, and we didn't get any public comments on this application. We also notified referral agents within three miles. There were some initial concerns, but all of those issues were resolved through the process. And at the end of the process, there were no objections to these applications. The Planning Commission heard this case on June 13. Staff and applicant provided presentations. There was no public comment or testimony. And the Planning Commission has recommended approval of this application by a five-to-zero vote with nine findings of fact. And so that is the recommendation before you. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions for staff? Not seeing any questions for staff. The applicant, this will be your moment to come on down, introduce yourselves, and make a presentation. Please make sure to state your name clearly so everyone knows who you are.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kristin Sullivan. It's nice to see you all. I'm with Foster Graham. Our address is 360 South Garfield in Denver. There's a team here with me today that I'm going to introduce. So I'm the warm-up act, I guess you could say. But I also wanted to be present to share some context about the proposed district and how it aligns with your comprehensive plan, how the Strasburg Plan has been implemented since it was adopted, and how this will help further implement the plan. So first, I'll start with introductions. So the development team is represented today by Carlton Babs, who's here behind me, and also available to answer questions as needed. The developer is Wolf Creek Run West LLC. My colleague David Foster and I are land use counsel for the applicant and are assisting with all of the development entitlements that you heard Greg mention. McGee Dee Becker is the district counsel. And my colleague John Hoistad will take over the presentation shortly here and talk to you all about the details of the service plan and answer all of your questions related to metro district transparency and accountability and things of that nature. Ed Kist with Tierra Financial Advisors is here. He prepared the financial plan that you heard about in the staff presentation that was independently reviewed by a consultant hired and engaged by the county. And then Manhard Consulting provided the civil engineering services, and those relate, of course, to the public improvements that will be financed through the use of the metro district if it's approved. All right, so I just want to give a bit of context before we launch into the metro district particulars. And we are, of course, pursuing land use approvals, and this is on your agenda as a land use case, but it's really a financing tool that you're hearing today. But I just wanted to give you the background. Greg also shared some of this, but wanted to share a little bit about the Strasburg community and how it's grown and how it will continue to evolve and grow through the approval of the development plans that help execute the vision that was established some time ago. So just to go back to 2002, Adams County and Arapahoe County jointly adopted a neighborhood plan for the Strasburg area in a pretty innovative approach for two counties together, develop a plan, and adopt the exact same plan in alignment. That vision was unique and pretty forward-looking and helped establish the character that has become the sort of dominant development pattern in Strasburg, which is that Main Street downtown community feel, a place where people can have an affordable single-family home, have parks and schools in their community, and be a standalone community that has that sense of connectedness. That vision has been reaffirmed over several different actions that the county has taken. So the 2012 County Comprehensive Plan reaffirmed that that was still the vision and the plan for Strasburg, that additional residential development to continue to build out that community and provide that as an option for families in Adams County was appropriate. And then again, just two years ago in 2022, when you adopted your Advancing Adams, most recent comprehensive plan update, there's pages in there again saying that's still the appropriate place for residential growth. It should be a standalone community. There should be separation of buffers between Bennett and Strasburg, but they're both places where people should have the option to have a single-family home in a standalone community. Also, the Planned Unit Development that's been approved, that was approved in 2020, sort of the end of the year of the first year of the pandemic. And so development wasn't really happening very quickly in the next couple of years. So there's been a little bit of a pause since the final development plan was approved. And now there are subdivision plats coming in to implement that plan that are under review right now with the staff. During that time period, the development changed hands. And our clients came into ownership of the project. You probably know Paul's Corporation did a lot of development out here, and they struck a deal with our clients. There are some extraordinary costs that were identified during that time period. The project really had been stalled for a couple of reasons, economics, as well as these extraordinary costs of the infrastructure. So the district is now proposed to facilitate the construction completion, to bring the amenities to the community that are not there today, and you'll hear about those in season pictures. But the roadways, of course, sewer water, parks, some of those things that make it a more complete community so that people can walk to a park from their house. So tonight's, or today's request, excuse me, is just simply the approval of the service plan to set up the metro district. And I just wanted to share how the land use plans are proceeding and how they align with your plan. So thanks for your time today, and I will pass it to John.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Hoistad of McGee Dee Becker, P.C. We're located at 450 East 17th Avenue in the city and county of Denver. So we have been engaged as metro district council to really facilitate the organization of this proposed Wolf Creek Run West Metropolitan District. And thereafter, we would also serve as general counsel to ensure that the district complies with all statutory law and develops in accordance with the service plan that you're considering today. Oh, I guess I, yeah, thank you, Greg. Greg actually did a wonderful job recapping the metropolitan district and what we're asking for today. So I'm going to try to move pretty quickly through our slideshow here so that we don't become too repetitive or too long-winded. So as Kristin mentioned, the Adams County Comprehensive Plan specifically identifies this corridor for residential development. And we're coming to you to request the the organization of a metropolitan district to facilitate this development in an economically feasible way to offer residential, a residential community homes at a price point that may be unachievable without a metropolitan district structure. Back in 2020, Adams County updated your development code. You may remember doing that, including Chapter 10, which is the Special District Guidelines, Rules, and Regulations. Those regulations really aligned the Adams County procedures and best practices with statutory law. But they went further. They provided reasonable buffers, in my opinion, around metropolitan district operations. Those would include things like tax limitations, debt limitations, and otherwise. And so we have aligned this metropolitan district service plan with the county's model service plan to incorporate those best practices and those reasonable buffers and advance this project in a way that the county can be comfortable with, and understanding that the residents will be protected and ensure that it will be able to discharge debt that is reflected in the development of these public improvements. Metropolitan districts are a primary way in which development occurs in Colorado for a couple of reasons. One, and I think the most important one, is that by developing public improvements through a metropolitan district and enabling a structure in which future tax revenues can be used to fund those public improvements, metropolitan districts are able to offer on the municipal bond market a tax-exempt bond to facilitate development instead of going to a private market and ultimately requiring a more expensive form of financing that would be achieved with, without a metropolitan district. But metropolitan districts are also important because, as local governments, they adhere to the same requirements for open meetings laws, Colorado Open Records Act laws, and other sunshine provisions that really enable metropolitan district development to happen in the most transparent and open way possible. There's a common misconception, I believe, that metropolitan districts are not controlled by the community. But unlike private development done without a metropolitan district, metropolitan districts have board of directors that are elected positions. So from the moment a resident moves in, purchases property within a metropolitan district, they are eligible to sit on the board and direct the metropolitan district's operations. All of our meetings are open to the public. We provide notice of the meetings regularly throughout the year before they happen. And there are other statutory benchmarks that we have to achieve. For example, you are all familiar with local auditing and budgeting practices. We are currently adopting audits for the 2023 year. Later this year, we will adopt budgets for 2025. These are practices that all local governments have to adhere to, and they give a chance for the metropolitan district to inform the public of what is going on and also to invite them into the room to see what the metropolitan district is planning for the future. There's also been frequently, and this has been, I think, brought to light through a lot of acts of the General Assembly in the last couple of years. There's been an issue in which some of the residents of metropolitan districts felt ill-informed of the presence of a metropolitan district when moving in. More recently, the General Assembly has adopted requirements that any first sale of a home within a metropolitan district come with an acknowledgement of the metropolitan district's powers, authorities, and importantly, its tax and mill levy. This ensures that, you know, even as you're going through your your closing documents on your new home, you know, that huge binder of information that you may be unfamiliar with and just eager to sign and move in, you are exposed to the presence of the metropolitan district, and you know what your tax burden is going to be. Furthermore, the General Assembly has just recently buffered that practice and required that metropolitan districts and other local governments will disclose annually, not just through their auditing and budgeting practice, what the mill levy will be for the subsequent year, but a look back at prior mill levies and revenues generated by the metropolitan district. And again, provide information about the maximum tax ability of the metropolitan district so that residents, again, are not caught off guard. The name of the game here is transparency. Metropolitan districts need to be open to the public, and we are looking for repeated efforts throughout the year to bring the public into the room to understand what the metropolitan district is doing. I think that the idea here is that our information ought to be easily accessible and easily understood. I really like this map here. Greg showed it earlier. The green areas, that initial district boundary that Greg described, the approximately 29 acres. The yellow boundary is the 168 acres. Within this, we are talking about 327 single-family residential units and about 818 residents ultimately. We expect this development to occur relatively quickly. They're looking at breaking ground even later this year, early next year, so that they can really bring this market or this product to market and offer these homes at a more achievable price point that you may not see very frequently in today's very hot market. You can see on the map, off to the east, the Wolf Creek. Further off to the west, we have, or I'm sorry, the west is Wolf Creek. Further off to the east, we have Comanche Creek. And I think this overlays really nicely with the next map here. Kristin actually brought this up earlier. This is from the Strasburg Area Plan in 2002, which has been readopted in 2012 and 2022. I think it overlays very nicely. You can see in yellow, the area of this metropolitan district is specifically identified for residential development. If we were to take that entire 168 acres and lay out the 327 homes across the entire property, you'd be looking at something at about two homes per acre. Now, that's not what is going to happen with this property. Instead, what we're looking at doing is, let me go back. There we go. Instead, what we're looking at doing is really making this more cohesive with the development that already took place to the east. So the lots within the Wolf Creek Run West Metropolitan District will have a typical frontage of 50 feet, and they'll be approximately 5,500 square feet inside. That is size. That is very consistent with the prior filing. And I think it's appropriate for this area more generally. We mentioned the Strasburg Area Plan adopted back in 2002. That called for a population in this corridor of approximately 10,000 to 12,000 people. Right now, we're sitting at something closer to 4,000 people. So really, development has not occurred. So really, development has not occurred of haste. And here, we're trying to offer something that was anticipated years ago, but development was arrested first by the pandemic, later on, by the the difficulty of financing this community as a whole. Here's some of the public improvements that we're talking about here. As this is essentially raw land, we're looking at grading, streets, water, sewer, drainage, and some parks and open space. Now, while all of these things are kind of necessary to pull to the property to facilitate these new homes, the things that people really are looking forward to are the the amenities. Everybody loves a park, open space. Here, we anticipate sixty-five acres of open space, a disc golf course, a playground, an exercise park, and my favorite, a loop trail that's going to wrap around the entire community. This could actually be a little bit more detailed, but I think it does go to what the intent is for some of these public improvements. Water, sewer, storm drainage, all going to eastern Adams. The roadways are anticipated to be owned by Adams County. The process for that is pretty well-established. The district will develop these improvements according to the standards and specifications of the county. After the county reviews these improvements, specifically the roadways, and determines that they were built up to snuff, it will take preliminary acceptance of the improvements, and there will be a warranty period in which the Metropolitan District or its contractor will be on the hook for anything that comes up. At the end of that warranty period, there's a final acceptance, and Adams County will assume control of the roadways. That would also include, like, snow plowing, I think, is the the thing that most people think of. There are other improvements within the Metropolitan District that will be publicly owned as well. We mentioned the parks and trail system, all of that open space. That's anticipated to be owned by the Metropolitan District. That means that it is open to the public, not just the residents of this metro district, but also of Strasburg as a whole, of Adams County, even Arapahoe County on the other side of the border. Anybody is welcome to use these amenities. This is the entire second filing of the subdivision. And we can see here that, you know, we have a fairly standardized lot size. One thing that differentiates this from the the filing off to the east, the first filing of Wolf Creek Run, is that these will be front-loaded garages instead of alley-loaded. But to keep people off of the street or to keep vehicular traffic to a minimum on the street, we have also identified within here certain tracks that will be used for parking. So those will be among the community and free for community members or the public generally to use. That really should make for, I guess, a safer roadway environment for the community and, you know, still maintain that cohesion with the prior filing. While these are not actual pictures of what they represent, I think it's a good idea to kind of see what we're talking about here. We have the centrally-located playground and exercise park, the disc golf course off to the west there, and you can't really see it on the map, but we do have that loop trail that wraps all the way around. You can imagine walking your dog or going for a quick run. Anybody in the community will be welcome to do that. I know that Metropolitan districts are something that maybe not everybody in the community is familiar with. I think that it's something that Strasburg is really just kind of getting into. As there, as I've said, development has not occurred there as originally contemplated or contemplated twenty years ago. But there are those buffers in the service plan that will safeguard this community and the residents and ensure that the Metropolitan District is responsibly managed. So we have within the the service plan a maximum mill levy of fifty mills, maximum debt authorization of twenty-five million dollars, and a maximum debt repayment term of thirty years. These things all work together to ensure that the Metropolitan District is able to discharge an appropriate amount of debt, reflecting the true cost of the public improvements that we've been talking about in a way that achieves a lower price point for the homes and reasonable financial terms. Without a Metropolitan District and these these benchmarks, we may be looking at something of hard-money financing to get this development over the threshold and to get these three hundred and twenty-seven homes built. We don't have a per-lot analysis of cost, but if we were to just take that twenty-five million dollars divided out over three hundred and twenty-seven homes, we'd be talking about approximately seventy-six thousand dollars of additional costs that would be owed on the price of a home day one. And when you're talking about a price point of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're talking about very quickly getting out of reach for a lot more people, moving up to, you know, five hundred and twenty-five thousand or so. As Greg noted, this was previously reviewed by the county's independent financial advisor. Upon that review, the independent financial advisor did determine that the district would be able to discharge its debt with its reasonable tax and its reasonable tax authority, that fifty mills. One final slide here. This is by no means comprehensive, but I think that some of you are familiar with some of the Metropolitan districts that I identified here. These are all Metropolitan districts that have either issued their their debt reflecting their public improvements or are very soon to do so. And so this is essentially the the maximum mill levies that they are imposing right now. You can see that we approach eighty mills in some communities just for the Metropolitan District, two hundred mills for all tax burden on a property. The Wolf Creek Run West Metropolitan District is a level below that. We're talking about just fifty mills and a hundred and forty mills overall. Again, that is only for the for a thirty-year imposition term in the event that it even takes that long to pay off the debt. As we know, the assessment rates rates in in Colorado are fluctuating quite a lot, but home prices are going up. And so there is, I think, a reasonable belief that the district may be able to discharge this debt even before that thirty-year term has expired. We welcome your questions.
All right, colleagues, two questions. We have a couple of questions for the applicant. Let's start with Commissioner Odricio, and then we'll see where we get.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the, right when you were doing that calculation of the twenty-five million dollars cost divided by three hundred and twenty-seven homes. I appreciate that because I look at Metro Districts as an important option for home buyers to. In this case, if you were to do this and buy a house, assuming everything else is equal and all the units are the same, that cost would be up seventy-six thousand dollars more, and I appreciate that. On the other side, though, I'd like to know, fifty mills, if I have my calculations, approximately would be about anywhere between fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars a year for that mill cost. Is that correct, or do you have that calculation?
I don't have that calculation, but a mill being equal to, you know, a tenth of a percent, that does sound accurate.
Okay, I'd have to think about that. I'll come back to that. But I just think it's important that home buyers at the beginning of these transactions understand there's a give and the take, and in order to bring down that initial cost, there is an additional yearly cost that they're taking on. With the additional cost of debt service and paying for participation in the Metro District. So I'm highlighting that. The other, the actual question that I have is, you've expanded the boundaries of an inclusion area. Do you, do you guys own everything within those boundaries?
The Wolf Creek Run West LLC does own everything within the boundaries. Some of that property has been subject to a note from Paul's Corp. That, I think, is expected to be extinguished later this year at that point. And as development initiates, I think the intent is to include, if not all of the rest of that inclusion area boundary, the rest of it to ensure that all of the identified lots within the filing two A and two B are included within the district.
Can we go to the map, actually, that you had shown, the difference between boundaries?
Sorry, let me get back there.
You're fine, John. That's fine. The other one was, I think you were up a little higher, it showed the difference. It was the area up there.
Oh, this one, I'm sorry, thank you.
I think that shows. The green is what was in the initial boundaries, but the inclusionary boundaries are in the yellow. And let me tell you where I'm going with this. I want to make sure, after I have a bad taste in my mouth about what's happening up in Brighton, where Metro District is able to use eminent domain on properties that are not part of the development. I'm also concerned about if there were ever any situation that allows this Metro District to use eminent domain outside of its boundaries.
Well, thank you for that question. The the district, because all of that property is under the control of the developer of the project, there would be no need for the district to exercise eminent domain. Effectively, the Metropolitan District Board at the onset will be the developer's representatives until the homeowners start moving in. So I think it 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 just wouldn't make sense for the Metropolitan District, in my mind, to exercise eminent domain when the Board of Directors is anticipating the inclusion of the property already. The Metropolitan District does have all the statutory authority under Title thirty-two as limited by this service plan. Eminent domain was not specifically called out anywhere in the service plan. And while I suppose that that authority does remain, there is not an intent or a need to exercise it at any point.
I think that's a good, that that makes a lot of sense. Statutorily, we're not asking the muck with that. That might be something we deal with at the legislature. But what we can ask is, and you just clarified, there is absolutely no intent for you to be doing any sort of capital projects or need to do anything beyond the boundaries of this inclusion area.
No.
Thank you very much. And the last one is, how long, at what point do the residents get to become majority members of the governing board?
Yeah, so we don't yet know exactly who the initial board members will be. I think we have some ideas about that, but the the initial board will be comprised of five individuals. They will be slated into board positions on two-year or four-year terms. Once the, once those terms expire, anybody, any resident is eligible to get on the board by running against one of the existing board members or, as frequently happens with these developments, the board members will simply step aside, and the residents will assume control.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else have questions for the applicant?
Thank you. I think that just overall, it's important with Metro Districts because you mentioned a number of recent laws. I think there's a lot of attention to Metro Districts. I think that's appropriate. This is something that is a necessary tool, as was documented by our staff and by your presentation. But for the existence of the collective efforts of a Metro District, you wouldn't be able to get the infrastructure you need to have this development be successful and be appealing to residents and that cost sharing, as was highlighted by my colleague. I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate that, in this instance, we've received no objections, but there aren't any residents yet. So it would be hard for objections to come forward. I think the challenge with these is that folks end up in a circumstance ten, fifteen years down the road and then begin to question the origin story because the debt service goes on for quite some time. And I think that hearing either from yourself in how this is put together on how, not just that these are going to be investments that are relevant to the development, to the parks, to the curb and gutter, other things included, but also that those purchases are made in good stewardship and some reassurances that future owners are going to look back and be like, oh, we had a great opportunity. We got a good value. The purchases that were made on our behalf were done in a way so that we have relevant debt, but not excessive debt to solve the project. So if you could talk about that good stewardship and how, what is the protocol for selecting projects, selecting vendors, selecting contractors to complete the construction items listed out for the Metro District's workload?
Yeah. So as with other local governments and governments across the board, the Metropolitan District will construct the improvements according to best practices to the extent that the Metropolitan District itself engages in construction of these improvements. The improvements, the the contracts will be bid out, and they will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. That means not necessarily the bidder that comes in, you know, at the bare lowest dollar amount, but one that we understand can execute the project and deliver the public improvements on schedule and at a quality that is appropriate to meet the standards and specifications that the county requires. To the extent that any of the public, the public improvements are constructed by the developer entity instead, there are safeguards in place to ensure that outside engineers, independent engineers, review the construction of all public improvements. In doing so, they look at other similar improvements being constructed within the Denver metropolitan area, and they have to ensure that those improvements are not excessively expensive but are at an appropriate market rate. Once that is determined, those improvements can be purchased by the Metropolitan District, effectively issuing public debt to purchase them, take ownership of them from from the developer entity. Currently, we're talking about, you know, any public contract going out to bid if there, if it's in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That changed, it moved up from just a couple of years ago when it was as low as fifty thousand dollars. That ensures that there is, this is always before, that these these costs are always scrutinized heavily at the front end as well as the back end before the Metropolitan District is to take ownership of anything. Again, because this is a local government, this all happens in open meetings. So the 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 notice of award for a public contract will happen before the board at a meeting that anybody from the community or anybody from the public generally is able to attend. These are just some of the transparency requirements on Metropolitan districts that will ensure that we are being good stewards of the public's money in this way.
I appreciate that. I think the challenge, I think, that we all know is that the development occurs before there are residents on site. And so the interested parties who would have a say in which projects are prioritized won't live on site, you know, assuming a brisk construction timeframe for another six to twelve months or eighteen months post the meeting occurring. And so, yes, it's publicly available, but the interested parties don't live on site yet, and that's the reason for the Metro District in the first place. So it's just a, it's a challenge, and I appreciate your due diligence here. Any other questions, colleagues? Great, thank you. This is the moment we open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public hearing room who has comment on PLN two thousand twenty-three dash nine Wolf Creek Run West Metro District? This would be your time to come down, introduce yourself, you'd have three minutes.
Okay, so no comments. This brings it back to my colleagues for any last questions, comments, concerns, or if somebody, excuse me, somebody has a moment to take a motion. Chair, I believe Commissioner Tedesco is making a motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move for approval of the creation of the Special District PLN two thousand twenty-three dash nine with nine findings of fact.
Second. Moved and seconded, that passed unanimously. Congratulations, thank you for your good work. Anything else? All right, that concludes our meeting.